Okay, I'll call this main door, please rise for the pledge of allegiance and the invitation following. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Something about Ed, turn off your pagers.
Sorry about that. Okay, moving on to approval of minutes for the city council meeting July 6th. Is there a motion?
Motion, it's moved.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion on those minutes?
Tim, we didn't do roll.
Well, I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself there. New phone.
That's what happens when you get calls, Dave.
Yeah.
Alan, here. Green, here. LaFleur, Ms. Stravich.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Yarck.
Here.
A motion to excuse councillor LaFleur from tonight's main due to being out of town would be in order.
So moved.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? He's in Florida.
Should we discuss that?
No, I think it's gonna be really hot down there. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We move on to approval of minutes. I'm sorry. Who made the motion to accept? John, and there was support.
Second.
Any discussion on those minutes? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. Anybody like to address city council at this time? We will move on. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes? Being not, a motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order.
So moved.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. Is there a motion for consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. There is no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration. We have six this evening. The first one being consideration of introduction and first reading of ordinance 138-2, Pet Cemetery. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to give consideration to introduction and first reading of ordinance 138-2, the Richmond Pet Cemetery Ordinance. The ordinance will establish an area of the Richmond Cemetery for use as the pet cemetery and provide for the establishment of rules and regulations, process of setting and collecting charges and fees, and providing procedures for the enforcement of this ordinance. As several quarterly roundtable meetings, the city council has discussed the possibility of the establishment of a potential pet cemetery near the back of our cemetery with administration. The eastern area of the cemetery north of the mausoleum is not well-suited for the expansion of the current cemetery, and we've been discussing its potential use as a pet cemetery. Both Paul Faedelen, former Public Works Director, and current DPW Director Jim Getzinger have worked on the attached ordinances and rules and regulations that are before you. And administration also prepared kind of a startup cost based on certain plant types discussed at the budget workshop.
Very good. Would there be any other introduction to this before a motion? Okay, is there a motion before discussion?
I make a motion to give introduction and first reading to ordinance 138-2, the Richmond Pet Cemetery Ordinance, and set the second reading for August 1st and 15th, 2016.
One of the other.
Or one of the other, 15th, I think the 15th, but I choose 15th, 2016. So that's what my motion will say.
Motion's been made and supported. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, as was mentioned in the background brief, kind of the startup costs for this would be $5,100. Again, the back area is kind of back further from the mausoleum to the north of that. So administration at the direction of council also set up kind of a framework or a layout plan that includes a hedge row to help differentiate between the cemetery and pet cemetery.
Thank you. Council has discussed this numerous times at workshop settings and looked at other communities and private entities that offer this. And as the manager stated, there is an area of our cemetery that we have looked at that is not conducive to burying human remains, and it would be a source of income to offset the costs of operating our cemetery. So I'm in favor of this. There's issues sometimes that, you know, burying animals where people are just wasn't something that you did. And after some, I guess, soul searching and whatnot, I really can't tell myself why not, you know? I think that probably came from many, 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 many years ago, maybe over 100 years ago, where there was, you didn't do that because people weren't, and animals weren't properly put in the ground. That's the only thing that I've been told by a person. So today, there is a necessity for it, and most people have to go out of town and use one of the other communities and/or private entities. And we have a piece of property that's perfect for this, from what we've been told. So I think it's good business, and it also offers a service to the people in our town who would like to pay tribute to their pets. So that's where I stand on it. Anybody else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I want to acknowledge Paul Faedelen for coming to us with this idea and really working out a lot of the details of it. As I said, in concept, I support it. I mean, as you said, you mentioned a number of things. You know, I appreciate that Mr. Faedelen noted that we had land that we couldn't use, or it would be a substantial amount of money to make it something we could use. It's gonna be separated. It's, as far as good governance, we're providing another, a new service. And I think there is definitely a change as far as, I mean, pets are a part of many people's families, and they see them as such. And there is, I think, a reasonable separation between the area of human remains and where the pet cemetery is gonna be. I think this is a real positive concept. And also, I appreciate that we, the public hearing, the second public hearing is gonna be a month away. So it's an opportunity for our citizens, if they have strong concerns with this, the concept, it'll give them ample time to think about it and give us feedback. But I think going forward with the concept is worthy to consider.
Anybody else? Any audience comments? Paul, you're the one who brought this to our attention in the first place. Any other comments? Very good. We will move on. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes. Make that clear, there will be a second reading on August 15th. Moving on to item number two, consideration of bid awards pavement maintenance. Mr. City Manager.
City council is scheduled to consider awarding the 2016 street maintenance contracts for asphalt patching, overband crack filling, and pavement markings. During the budget workshops, administration discussed expanding the city's preventative maintenance program for streets with the city council, doing more crack filling and asphalt repairs than we've done in the past. We hope that this will extend the useful life of some of our streets. And so Jim has put together kind of an expanded asphalt maintenance repairs bids, three bids. And we are asking council to favorably consider awarding the asphalt patching contract to James P. Contracting, the crack filling contract to Skadeller, and the pavement marking to Zebra Striping. And Jim has checked the references of all those contractors and is here if you have any questions.
Very good. Is there a motion before discussion?
I move to award the asphalt repair contract 2016 SR-1 in the amount of $43,102 to James P. Contracting with expenses charged, the appropriate line item, and fund.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Is there anything that you'd like to add, Jim, to this, any of these three that are up tonight? These were all put out for bid, I take it?
Correct. They're all put out for public bid. James P. has worked in the city numerous times, and they're a reputable company. So that, the patching is really something we do every year. It's just a little more this year, more just pavement failure type areas are included in addition to water main repairs, stuff like that, that we would typically do every year anyway. The crack sealing is something we haven't done recently. Skadeller is a very large company. We had a fair amount of bids for this project, and that's really the cracks that you see in the road. MDOT and Macomb County do this annually, and that's what we're trying to move towards. This is a large project for the crack sealing because it hasn't done in a while, but this won't be an every-year thing. I don't believe every couple of years we would pick up with it. The streets that are deteriorated too far aren't included in this because it's not a benefit to do that. And then this pavement marking, that's another annual thing. Zebra Striping has worked the last two contracts. They've done this work primarily Main Street. The stop bars and crosswalks are under this project. We kind of do half one year, half another, so it's a couple of thousand a year typically for that.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Any audience comments on this? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We also have another motion for the crack filling.
I move to award the overband crack filling contract 2016 SR-2 in the amount of $50,000 to Skadeller Construction with the expense charged to the appropriate line item and fund.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on this? Any, go ahead.
Just want to comment, I happened to run into the Macomb County Director of Roads while I was out and about, and he acknowledged our efforts, our previous efforts on roads in the past. And then also this effort we're making regarding, you know, maintaining our roads and for longevity, including particulars overband crack filling, to extend the life of them. So I just wanted to share that, you know, comments from the outside, people that see what we're doing.
Very good. Anything else? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We also have another motion to award the pavement marking. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to award the pavement marking contract 2016 PM-1 in the amount of $2,198.80 to Zebra Striping with the expenses charged to the appropriate line item and fund.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on this one? Where are they at? You said they're actually doing, is it all Main Street markings for this particular one?
Pretty, I believe so.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Any audience participation in this one? Being not, all back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. Item number three is consideration of bid award DPW truck. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider the purchase of a pickup for the DPW. The fiscal year 2016-17 budget includes $30,000 for the purchase of a half-ton standard duty pickup and a service body. If approved, the city's 2003 GMC 2500 service truck will be retired, and the city's 2012 GMC pickup will be repurposed with a service body. Currently, what we're requesting is the award of the pickup truck through the purchase with the state bid contract through Red Holman GMC. We've used this in the past, the state contract, and it meets our purchasing ordinance requirements. And so we'll be purchasing a half-ton two-wheel-drive truck with a standard cab and eight-foot bed.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to authorize the purchase of a 2016 GMC Sierra 1500 half-ton pickup from Red Holman GMC with the expense of $21,596.05 charged to the appropriate line item vehicle purchases, Public Works, DPW Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion?
Just curious, Mr. Mayor, how many miles are on that vehicle? You know?
You mean the one we're proposing to retire?
2003, yeah.
Approximately 100,000.
100,000, okay.
But that's considering the use, that's quite a bit for...
A lot of idle time there, too, probably.
Opening and closing doors, I mean, how many, all that's significant wear.
Yeah, you can see the wear on that vehicle as I see it, driving around town, so it's time to replace it.
Anything else? This again was talked extensively on how you are moving bodies around on trucks and whatnot in our workshop. It looks like a very good way of doing business there with the trucks, too. Any comments from the audience? Paul, can you use the mic so they can hear you?
Is the 2003 the four-wheel drive?
No.
That's the...
We, no, it's not. The 2003 is the current truck with a service body on it.
Ah, okay, '22.
So that was Schreuer's old truck?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. It's a water truck. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. Item number four is consideration of cable franchise agreement and Channel 6 quote. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider approving the proposed Comcast franchise agreement in letter of understanding slash quote to install the Channel 6 head-end to be able to then broadcast a Channel 6 feed to, of Richmond TV programs to homes within the city of Richmond limits. As we've discussed before, our current contract does not conform with Public Act 480, the Uniform Video Service Local Franchise Agreement. And therefore, any elements of that franchise agreement that conflict with that law aren't really enforceable anyway. So the state franchise is pretty much a one-size-fits-all that was created by the state back when they passed this public act. And so we don't have a lot of wiggle room as far as that franchise agreement goes. Having said that, they've submitted that. They've also submitted the quotes to do the head-end that would allow us to have our own Channel 6. Jason and I met with both Shannon, that submitted, does the, kind of the community stuff with the franchise agreements, but also three members of their technical team, two that do the, kind of the cabling, and one that's kind of the liaison person, technical liaison person for all the local peg stations. And we met with them today, this morning, and if approved tonight, it is roughly about six weeks' time to build out and get everything connected into this building. As council may recall, back in, I think it was 2009, we did a little work on this before, and then with the state police leaving, kind of everything got put on hold while we took a look at what our best options were. Having done that, the cost for the head-end has actually dropped a little bit, maybe in part due to how far from the closest node they have to run the cabling to City Hall. It probably was a little further distance to get it to Old City Hall. And so they'll be running cable out to across the street here, and then boring the line in from across the street over to where all of our communication lines come in for this building.
Very good. Is there a motion before discussion?
I make a motion to approve the Uniform Video Service Local Franchise Agreement and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Support.
It's been made and supported. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just am very excited about this, that I can hardly contain myself, actually. This has been something we've, even before I was on council, it has been discussed. The possibilities are really just, I mean, they're limitless. It's our imaginations are what gonna limit this, and our cable coordinator, and the committee there, and even our residents. This is something that the entire community can be involved with, the schools. I mean, we're gonna have our own TV station, like, that's really what it is, and this is so exciting.
It is. It's very exciting. Yeah, you said it. It's very, very exciting. I can't say enough how long we've waited for this. And as John said, it got kind of skewed when, you know, the state told us that they were leaving this building, so we had another roadblock, you know, it was like, ugh, you know, the anxiety. But it's happening. And, you know, the franchise agreement that we're gonna pass on now, hopefully, is gonna help make that happen. But I think the next motion is a round of applause, probably, for the next motion. So anyhow, is there any other discussion on this motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I don't think we talked about it. The current Channel 6, which is run by the NEMC, which we used to be a part of, but got out of a few years ago. Some people are still interested within the city of Richmond to still see that programming. What'll happen?
They will not see that programming. They will see our feed. Now, that doesn't mean...
Is there a way that we can switch it to another channel, or while we're not doing anything, we can...
It does not appear in our meeting this morning that they can. Yep, yep. Now, theoretically, we, you know, like, in the past, some of the school programming really is something that NEMC has wanted to air, so they've just given it, we've given it to them. That doesn't mean that we couldn't take some of their programming, run it on our channel, should our cable commission and council want to, and they want to give it to us. But as far as the technology of it, no.
Yeah, because as far as a community perspective, it's nice to see the other municipalities, what they're doing, like, you know, with Memphis and Armada and all that kind of stuff, even though, you know, we're in Richmond. I hear from people that they still like seeing those other programming, which I do, too, as well.
Yeah. I think they haven't seen our program yet, but I think we're gonna do an outstanding job with a full-time administrator and now the teacher. And the community schools being involved heavily now, that a class is gonna be forming this semester, this upcoming semester, and we're gonna have more people that are highly interested in production and filming and everything else. I think we're gonna see some very, very high-quality things on our Richmond TV. And I believe we have a, you've had a very good rapport, Jason, with Channel 6 out of Mason, Armada. You guys have worked together on a few productions, have you?
Yep, we've worked together on a few productions, and we sometimes just, we'll watch each other at it and discuss shop. But we maintain a relationship throughout the years.
Yeah.
And I think Bill Bradley's been there for about five now, five or six.
So I think, I think we're gonna see this evolve into probably covering a lot of the concerns that you may have heard from some of the residents. But I think when they see what we have, it's gonna be outstanding. I'm sure it will be. Anything else on this? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes. We also have the motion to approve the expense to have the channel installation into City Hall here. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the expense of $15,544.42 for the city of Richmond public educational and government Comcast channel installation and authorize the city manager to sign the letter of understanding.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Pretty much covered that. That and the fact that when we did look at this, I believe it was around $24,000 eight years, six years, seven years ago, whenever that was, that we got a quote from them last time?
About six years ago was the last quote. Yeah, it was about 20, it was just under $24,000, so...
Yeah, was it technology, well, like John said, it's because possibly the wiring, but a lot of this stuff has gone down in price, too, hasn't it? Some of your computer?
Not the, not like the head-end that we're gonna be getting that's gonna be sending the signal out. It's because of the location of where we are from the node. It's because of the fiber, because fiber cable installation is very expensive.
Okay, okay, very good. Okay, any other discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You know, and, you know, obviously, there was a great desire for this, but I do give the council credit for the fact that putting it on hold when we knew regarding City Hall and not going forward just because we really wanted it, and setting it up in City Hall, then having to spend money to bring it here, that that desire was held back. And, I mean, it's that it put it off a few years, but I think it was the right thing to do to figure out what was going on with City Hall, and I think we're better for it, for coming, you know, waiting and setting it up here. I think that was the responsible...
It's just, it's just the anxiety level.
Right, right.
It was like, we were right there, you know, we were gonna finally get our channel back, you know, and have control over what is put on television. And versus signing our stuff to Troy, was it?
Southfield.
Southfield?
Mm-hmm. We send it to Comcast in Southfield right now.
And giving very few hours out of the week to have our stuff on television. It's like Jamie started off with. It's, we're gonna have that freedom now.
Yep.
Put whatever we want, within reason, whenever we want. Anything else?
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to mention that we will still maintain our YouTube channel, which is where a lot of people that don't have Comcast cable do watch our programming. That's been developing over the last few years, and a lot of people that have gone away to Dish or some other alternative versus Comcast still can continue to view our programs.
Okay, so now this gets a little more technical. So if we are up and running, can they pick that up on YouTube, or is it individual tapings of events that they can pick up?
The YouTube is an internet-driven, it's when you're on the internet, you watch our programs through your computer.
Yes.
So, okay.
But...
We will not be streaming.
...be put on the television, will not necessarily be on YouTube.
No, there will, there will not be any live streaming of our 24/7 channel.
Very good. I just started seeing things come up on my phone that says you can watch television on your iPhone.
You can, but...
Haven't got there yet. I just got the iPhone. Come on, you got it. But I just thought maybe that was the possibility, that, you know, that we'd be doing the same thing.
You can stream, live stream up to two to four hours on YouTube, and, but you can't do, like, the entire channel streaming out. It sucks up a lot of bandwidth.
Okay, okay. Very good, thank you.
Well, someday, you know, maybe your wife at home could be, you know, streaming on her iPhone, the council meeting.
Could be, yeah.
Someday, you know.
Someday, yeah. Okay, anything else? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes. Six weeks, hopefully. Okay, moving on. Item number five is consideration of board appointments for the planning commission and the cable television. John?
Council is considered to make board appointments tonight. Bill Ruff has reapplied for the cable commission and Mike Kaminsky for the planning commission.
And I would ask that you would confirm the reappointment of Mike Kaminsky to the planning commission also. Is there a motion?
I move to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Mike Kaminsky to the planning commission for a three-year term with an expiration date of June 30th, 2019.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on that? Mike's been on for quite some time, and he's doing a good job. He brings things up, and I hope he's watching this. He brings things up that other people don't always think about, and he stirs the pot every once in a while, which is good. It gets, you know, it gets everybody thinking on what's going on more clearly sometimes. So appreciate his time on the planning commission. And also, he's our representative on...
BZA, yes.
BZA. As a planning commissioner, he has also volunteered to be our rep on BZA, which hopefully he will continue to do. Any other comments? Any audience comments on this? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes. We need a motion for the reappointment of Bill Ruff to the Cable TV Committee.
I make a motion to reappoint William Ruff to the Cable TV Committee for a three-year term with an expiration date of June 30th, 2019.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Billy's been on that for quite a number of years also. I believe, I don't even know how long he's been on that committee. It's been a while. It doesn't say either on those sheets, does it?
No, just when the term is expiring, I think.
No. It just says when it expires. Yeah, he's done a good job there also.
We, so appreciate the people coming back. What's our present, maybe it's a good time to bring up our vacancies?
How about we, we work on this motion, then we'll have that conversation.
Fair enough. I just thought it might be good to put that out. We're still looking for people.
Yep. Yeah, we'll bring that up. Any other discussion on Billy reappointment? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. We thank Bill also. Now, Jeff, your question of what is out there that's open?
Right, Debbie, it's that we have, it's definitely appreciated. We have people who are continuing to come back and contribute, but I think we have a number of vacancies, so I thought it might be worth just announcing where there might, where our vacancies are.
I don't have them in front of me, but I know we have on Tifa, EDC, and Planning.
Okay.
So I know those three boards. On BZA, there might be a slot. And Rec, there's not. Libraries, there's not. So I know those three at least.
And we know that Board of Review is gonna have at least one opening.
This, this winter, correct.
Which is gonna be tough to fill. And then, there's one more. Can I see your sheet for a second?
Tifa.
I mentioned Tifa, EDC, and Planning.
Tifa's got two. Planning has one, I believe, right now. There's another.
This is not the most current one, so.
But anyhow, we do advertise in the Voice newspaper, the openings that we have, which includes prior to reappointments also. So when we say the record has three openings, there's, there, there's definitely three openings. You can apply for that. But quite often, when somebody has done a great job on one of our boards, we often reappoint them, because they've given the time and, and the effort to help us out, to run the community. So, yeah, there's a few there right now that are open. Some very important positions for the city right now. Okay, moving on. Item number six is consideration of the Good Old Days Resolutions. Mr. City Manager?
Council's scheduled to review the request from the Richmond Good Old Days Festival Committee for permission to conduct the fifty-third annual Good Old Days Festival and the special events in conjunction with this festival. This year, the Good Old Days Festival is scheduled for Thursday, September eighth, through Sunday, September eleventh.
Thank you. Is there a motion to conduct, to close, request closure of M-19 for, from MDOT to conduct the grand parade and the children's parade?
I move to adopt resolution number two thousand and sixteen dash five, which directs the city clerk to submit an application on behalf of the Good Old Days Festival Committee to MDOT for permission to close M-19 to conduct the grand parade and children's parade in conjunction with the fifty-third annual Good Old Days Festival.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion? We go through this every year. There's a lot of motions here. Any audience comments on this one? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. We also need to adopt a resolution to request M-19 to close M-19 for the outhouse race on Friday. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to adopt resolution number two thousand and sixteen dash six, which directs the city clerk to submit an application on behalf of the Good Old Days Festival Committee to MDOT for permission to close M-19 to conduct the outhouse race on Friday, September ninth, two thousand and sixteen, in conjunction with the fifty-third annual Good Old Days Festival.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion on this? There are challenges out there this year for the outhouse races. So, longtime chairman of that, Jim Ellison family has retired. He gave us notice a couple of years ago, and so we have some new people that are, have stepped up, so to speak, and are gonna be running the outhouse races, and it's for children and adults this, this year. So there are challenges out there. So, looks like it should be a good time again. Any other comments? Any audience comments? Me not. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Need a motion to conduct the fireworks display on September tenth. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt resolution number two thousand and sixteen dash seven, which approves the request to conduct the fireworks display on Saturday, September tenth, two thousand and sixteen, in conjunction with the fifty-third annual Good Old Days Festival.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Discussion on the fireworks display approval. Audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four is the motion to hang banners and close streets and those things necessary to conduct the festival weekend. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-six, twenty, twenty-sixteen, I was just gonna say twenty-sixteen dash eight, which approves the request from the Good Old Days Festival Committee to hang the banners, close certain streets, and the city parking lots in conjunction with the fifty-third annual Good Old Days Festival.
Support.
Most been, motion has been made and supported. Any discussion on this motion? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. We hope for good weather. Okay, we move on to City Manager's comment, sir.
Uh, the paving of the tennis courts got pushed back one day, so they should be paving those tomorrow. All the new drainage and electrical work is done. They also removed the siding on the center house over on the three houses along Park Street, and so that contractor can now come back in and get the remaining house. So we anticipate that being done this week. Also, as you're aware, the sixty-four gallon recycle bins have been distributed. Pretty much everyone should have them now, and they'll start the bi-weekly collection of recycling tomorrow. Yard waste and trash is still picked up every week. Tomorrow starts the bi-weekly schedule, so north of Division Road will be picked up tomorrow, south of Division Road will be picked up the following Tuesday, and then just alternating back and forth, so.
John, I've had a lot of people ask, they don't want the big container that was dropped at their house.
Call and email me, and we'll, we'll get, we're getting a list. They have a third party that is dropping those off, so they just call city, contact City Hall.
Okay. The other one is I get, question I get is, how much did that cost the city?
It did not cost the city anything, and in fact, it, it kept the cost for this year's contract. Normally, we have a two or three percent, five percent increase every year. This year, we did not get an increase in cost due to going to the every-other-week recycling. And this is similar programs that they've done with both New Baltimore and Romeo, going to an every-other-week collection. The bin is now sixty-four gallons versus eighteen, so you have three times the amount and usually three times the space, and are able to go handle that bi-weekly. With the lid, it also, a lot of people who may not recycle, but their neighbors do, sometimes with the wind, their neighbors' recycling ends up in their yard. With these new bins with the lid, they won't have that situation. So it did not cost the city anything, nor the residents, to get that bin, and actually kept, can help contain our cost for this year of the contract. And then, the larger container, and especially the lid, they've shown and seen in other communities that it actually increases recycling, participation in the recycling program. And then also, with it being on wheels versus having to carry that out to the curb, it's a little easier to get it out there.
And the third was, how do they get rid of the little ones if they wanna keep-
If they wanna keep the big one, get rid of the little one, put the little one inside the big one.
Oh, okay.
When you put it out, yeah.
Okay, very good. All right.
I had one more question with that, and then the question is, can we get a second bin?
That, you'd contact Waste Management? I believe their answer was yes when, when they came and talked to us.
Okay, just verifying that again.
Or maybe ask your neighbor that doesn't want their-
Yeah.
Again, it's a new program for all of us, so we're still trying to work all those issues out.
And the other part is too, they can still use the small bins if they want to.
Correct. If they put it out beside the larger bin, they'll, they'll collect both. If you put it inside the bin, they'll take the smaller.
But one thing on that, when's pound getting done?
When I, I'll have to contact them. I know they were having, their, their third party was having a little hard time getting it, getting it in the mouth there.
Okay.
Yep.
You can drop your stuff at my house.
Sure.
Okay.
Although she filled it tonight. Okay. Anything else, John? Anything else, John?
Nope.
Okay. Paul?
On, on that, where people are wanting to, where people are wanting to get rid of their tubs, they should consider what they're going to do in the winter, 'cause you're trashing, everything's gonna be out in the outlawing area between the sidewalk and the curb, which is normally full of snow. So unless they're planning on hand shoveling that out, or snow blowing it out, or something, they're not gonna be able to get that big recycle tub out there.
All right. Okay. All right, moving on. Council comments. Michael?
Nothing today, thank you.
Jeff?
Just one thing. Remember, before we air, August second is big primary, very important primary. People should come out and vote. Encourage participating in the process.
Absolutely. In a lot of cases, you're going, the, the primary's gonna determine who our representatives are. So it's very, very, very important to get out and vote, just like it is in November.
I'm excited about August second.
John?
Nothing tonight.
Em?
I just wanted to say that I think the bump outs look great now that it's completed, and hopefully the residents will get a better look up close this weekend with the sidewalk sales and appreciate the pedestrian safety benefits. That's all.
I agree with you a hundred percent. Emily?
Yeah, I'm Jamie, but that was Emily.
I'm looking right at you, Jamie.
That's okay, but I agree with Emily.
Unless she was beside herself.
Yeah, she was beside herself, that's right.
But I agree with Emily on the bump outs, and it is really nice to cross at the bump outs. And again, vote August second.
Yes, absolutely.
Very excited for that.
My turn. I have heard some negative comments, which we always hear negative comments when there's change especially. And I've got a few letters that have been addressed to me personally that I will be answering very shortly. People don't realize that this has been on the books officially since nineteen ninety-six to get those bump outs in there to calm the traffic. Every expert, consultant, whatever we have hired has said that is probably the only way you can calm traffic. And for various reasons, that we were never allowed to do it. Now, evidently, MDOT has different thoughts and are allowing us to do it. The Streetscape Committee, in the last year, revisited that again and said, yes, we wanna do that. That's an important part of what Streetscape was all about, was to get people to be able to be safer crossing Main Street in the downtown. It, Streetscape plans originally called, I believe, for three, at least three intersections to have the bump outs on, which I think would even more so calm that traffic down. The effect that it's having right now, it's angering some people, but I think, I, I can't imagine a good reason why it angers anybody. It, it's something that we need to do downtown. It's a change, I understand that. And I live on that corner, and it is, it is, it was getting used to making that turn on there. At this point in time, there's no more difference for me turning on there than it was before. If a car was parked there, it's, it's almost the same difference. So, and you can go to two other blocks either way to make that turn if you're not comfortable to make that turn there. So, I, I think it's a great thing. I think it looks great now that the majority of the barrels are gone. It just enhances our Streetscape. It just, and it helps platoon the traffic. And we all know we have way too much traffic. And I think one of the number-one things, and we haven't gotten into that conversation lately, but when we have done citizen surveys, when we've had business people come in over the years and everything else, the number-one thing was off-street parking, the horrible traffic that we have on Main Street, pedestrian safety. Those were the top things, and every, every time that we've done any kind of a survey, had people come into City Hall and talk to us. And this is the only answer that we can get on a, on a Michigan highway. It's the only thing they're allowing us to do. No more lights. We begged for the last two that we got, literally begged for them, because they didn't meet the criteria. So this is a step in the right direction. And we've talked about, let's see how this works out, that maybe there's gonna be more down the road. The other thing is, sixty percent of this funding for that was done with federal money.
Correct.
Our CBPG money. And there's very few other things that we can use. It now has made it ADA-compliantable.
Correct.
The newest standards that the, that they have come up with for handicapped people, blind people. If you look closely, you'll see the bumps on the, on the sidewalk, which would indicate to a trained blind person that they're at an intersection. We've had those, the first, was it the first rules that came?
Yeah, when we put them, installed them in the North Business District, it was like one of the first years that Michigan started to adopt those, and everyone was still scrambling to figure out how to put them in, and they were using an actual clay brick that had the, the dimples at the top of the brick. And they found that those quickly wore off, broke off when shoveling in a cold weather climate. So, over probably that first five years of Michigan complying with the, those newer ADA regulations, they kinda tweaked the standards, so to speak. And so, the ones that were put in this time, meet those new standards.
Yeah. So we, we got a lot of things accomplished by doing the bump outs, and I personally hope that we, you know, that it works out and that we see more of this to calm the traffic. People have become so aggressive, we all know that, and so inhibited with using their cell phones and texting and everything else right down the middle of our Main Street. All you gotta do is sit in the window of the barber shop like I have for the last eight weeks while I was off on medical and see how many people drive by with their heads down. You know, we've got to have something out there that reminds them, you know, watch out. You don't have, you know, the wide lanes. The other thing is, people are passing on the right-hand side constantly. It's ridiculous how bad it's gotten. This is gonna stop that completely, at least there. They're gonna think twice about trying to, you know, cut back into traffic. So it, it perturbs me a little bit that people are, are saying how ridiculous this was and what a huge waste of taxpayer funds it was. But they really don't know what it's all about, what it's really doing out there. So I think, given time, they'll realize how important this was for our community. So, enough said.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't have my cause, but I just wanted to comment what you were saying. You know, out there, I've heard some of the same concerns about it, but I, I think one of the things I give the council credit is that, you know, if you do things the same way, the same all the time, you have the same outcome. And I think, we'll see what happens. I, I'm not necessarily convinced that it's gonna work. I mean, you know, we have these suggestions and recommendations, but we tried it. We're gonna, we'll try one intersection and see if, if, you know, if it does well, we'll go forward. If it, if it doesn't achieve what we want, I don't think we'll go forward with it. But I think the citizens hopefully continue to trust us that we've looked at all the information, there was enough to support trying it, and I think this council's always tried to do, just like this pet cemetery, tried to do different things to try to have better outcomes for our citizens. And it, it's worth giving it a shot. I hope people just, just give it a chance. If, instead, if it doesn't, if it doesn't give the outcome, I don't think the council's gonna support going forward with it anymore.
No.
But if, if it's positive, we go forward. And I think that's good governance.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else? Audience comments? Back to the table. We're all set. Okay. We need to go into closed session for Teamster negotiations and City Manager evaluation. We need a motion to do that, to go into closed session. Is there a motion?
Motion to convene a closed session in accordance with Section eight C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act two sixty-seven of nineteen seventy-six, is amended for strategy negotiations sessions connected with negotiation of collective bargaining with either negotiating party, request a closed session, excuse me, a closed hearing.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Discussion. John, what we don't have in there is to go also for-
It's the next page.
Next page. Oh, I'm sorry. Mine's stuck together. Okay. There we go. Okay. Any discussion on this item, on this motion? Roll call vote, please.
Green?
Yes.
Lafore's absent. Ms. Drabich?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Yarick?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Motion passes. We also have the motion, which I didn't see 'cause it was somehow stuck to the, to go into session for the periodic personal evaluation of the City Manager as requested by the City Manager.
Yes.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I move to convene a closed session in accordance with Section eight A of the-
I move to convene into closed session in accordance with Section 8(a) of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act 267 of 1976, is amended for the purpose of considering a periodic personnel evaluation of the City Manager as requested by the City Manager.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion? Being not? Roll call, please.
Lafore's absent. Ms. Stravich?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Yarck?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll take a five-minute break and then go into closed session. Okay, we need a motion to reconvene into open session. Is there a motion?
I move to reconvene into open session.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion? Being not? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion passed. We're back in open session. We move on to other business. Other business would be, the first one would be Teamster negotiations. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the tentative agreement with the Teamsters Local 214.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Is there any discussion? Appreciate the City Manager and administration's abilities to work with employees to come to a mutual agreement on the new contract.
Thank you.
Anything else? Being not? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion does pass. We also have a second item, City Manager evaluation. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the City Manager evaluation results, where the City Council came to a consensus that the City Manager received a score of 3.52 out of 4.0, which is rated as effective to very effective, but leaning more towards very effective. Furthermore, if council considers salary adjustments for the non-affiliated personnel this year, it would be appreciated that council considers adjusting the City Manager's rate at the same time.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Just want to compliment the City Manager on another very favorable review, and I think it's always been a positive, the working relationship, especially as demonstrated by the recent task motion regarding the Teamsters, of all of us working together. Also, I appreciate the fact that one of the comments I often hear talking to people is frustration sometimes that labor or the workers get one deal, and then, you know, management or the executives get the golden parachute and so forth. Or for say, let's say, Congress gets a different deal than everybody else has. So I want to compliment the City Manager on the continuing that relationship of, if we consider the non-affiliated, that we consider him at the same time, and that, and the same thing, we keep it all together between our affiliated and non-affiliated to be fair to both, that everybody gets kind of that same equal treatment. So that's great.
Yeah, I would also like to make a comment. Thanks for the City Council for taking the time to fill out the evaluations and providing some good comments and good ratings, and then also the committee, which was Councilor Yarck, Dennis Lafore, and myself, for getting together to put this together and bring it forward, and also thank John for the great job that he's been doing. And also point out that his rate, his score was up from last year. So he's been improving in areas, and he's all done a great job, but I want to point out that he continues to improve his abilities.
Very good. Agree with everything that's been said. Appreciate all the work that John has did again this year, and we look forward to working with you for the years to come.
And I look forward to working with council. As I mentioned, it's a very good relationship between the council and the City Manager, and also the council and the staff here, and I know all of administration appreciates the work that the council puts in and their cohesiveness in moving the city in the right direction.
Thank you, John. Anything else? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion does pass. I'm going to have to back step just a little bit. There's a couple important things that I did not include in my council comments, and that is the community garage sale, which is this Saturday, July 23rd, from 8:30 to 1:00.[1653.83]